The following is a production of Cary TV, the town of Cary's government access channel. Call to order, the March 9th meeting of the Cary Town Council. Want to let you know that Councilmember Robinson could not be here this evening. She is out of town. She sends her regrets. So this time, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Smith for our ceremonial opening. Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a few things here. Let me start with a greeting. Benachtí la le porig quig pabul bolier cairi ersun de la coher an vi in aran. That was Gaelic, the original language of Ireland. In English, what I just tried to say was greetings to the citizens of Cary on behalf of your sister city and meet Ireland. And for those of you watching who do speak Gaelic, please accept my apology, for I'm sure what you just heard left you speechless. Our friends in Ireland were reminding us of what a great time of year it is with celebrations galore. Here in Cary, starting next Friday on St. Patrick's Day, I'm sure all of the pubs and breweries in Cary will be celebrating. And I encourage you to pay particular attention to downtown, the emerging hotspot in all of Wake County. And also next month, on April 22nd, at the Cary Arts Center, the sister cities of Cary, along with the town, will be hosting the Fourth Annual Caley, which is a Celtic festival which celebrates Scottish and Irish cultures. It's an evening of music and dance, all performed by local Celtic artists. You won't want to miss it, and tickets are already going fast. But you know, it's not all about fun and parties. As we celebrate St. Patrick's Day, we need to think about the link between ourselves and the rest of the world, especially the Shamrock and the Stars, the historic link between Ireland and America. Our ancestors, our Irish ancestors, looked on the Atlantic as a bridge, not a border, and as an opportunity and a challenge, not an obstacle. Cary is truly, truly blessed to have a diverse citizenry actively involved in all of our sister city efforts. If you do not know, 20% or nearly 20% of Cary was born overseas. 20%. I think that's absolutely amazing. So not only with our history with Ireland, but also Taiwan and France and Canada, and some of our emerging new friendships in India and Germany, it really helps us in Cary celebrate what makes us special, our embracing cultural diversity. And don't be surprised if in the two countries of Germany and India soon become much more active in Cary. Let me close with a traditional, very short and sweet Irish proverb. May the hinges of our friendship never grow rusty. Let's all keep that in mind as we celebrate the upcoming St. Patrick's Day. Now join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First order of business this evening is to adopt the agenda. I would entertain a motion to do so. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, second, and a third. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. I want to recognize Samuel Gianni from Boy Scout Troop 152 is in our audience this evening, working on his citizenship in the community badge. If you would stand and be recognized, please. So this time, it's a great event for us in the town of Cary. We'd like the presentation of the Citizens Assisting Police, or what we call the CAP Team, and the recognition of their volunteer service. So I'd invite Chief Godwin down at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So I want, for just a moment, I want you to imagine that you're in another world. All right? You're in some kind of parallel local government. And I'm here to tell you that it's possible to have 166 part-time employees, and it costs you exactly nothing. Zero. Now, that sounds like a different world. It might sound like a government that doesn't exist yet, but I can in fact tell you that it absolutely exists, and it has since June of 2000. And it has through our Cary CAP Team, CAP standing for Citizens Assisting Police. Again, they were founded in June of 2000, and while they're not police officers, in pursuit of its stated mission, CAP Team members simply, to use their words, serve those who serve. By assisting in administrative, non-police roles, thereby freeing up officers to do their jobs, which is safeguarding Cary's quality of life by keeping Cary safe. They started with about 20 members in the year 2000, and it's grown to that present day strength that I mentioned of 166 CAP Team members. On average, year over year, they provide about 6,000 hours of volunteer hours as a team. Over their 17-year history, the CAP Team has served in a variety of roles, supporting events such as lazy days, National Night Out, they do maintenance on our firing range, they help us with training exercises, they do seatbelt usage surveys, and many, many other tasks. So now, if you would allow me, I'd like to call down Ms. Ingrid Wright to the front for the presentation, for a few comments and presentation of the ceremonial check.
Good evening, Mayor Weinbreak, Town Manager, distinguished Council. It's good to be here again. It's been a year, and actually, 2004 was the first year that I presented the check to then-Mayor Ernie McAllister, and that represented our first 18 months of work for the town of Cary, and the check was an amount of $19,000. We were very, very proud of that. And as Chief has already mentioned, we are now 166 members, and it was actually a standing joke between Chief Bazemore and myself that there will be a day when we will outnumber uniformed officer, and we're on our way. I know by now you're familiar with most of what we do, and Chief has already mentioned quite a few things. Might add another few. We do park patrol to make sure that our parks and our parkways are safe. We do that about once a month. And we do the substation at Cary Town Center. Am I doing something? Oh, thank you. At the Cary Town Center, of course, we work also, or volunteer also, not only for the police department, but also for the town at all your events. And I also want to mention something that's really important, and that is that it's now our 10th year that we refurbish bikes. It started with that Cary Police Department had a number of bikes that were abandoned, and we took them and we repaired them. And the team that has been diligently in doing so for 10 years have now given out 2,700 bikes. There was actually a time when soldiers came from Fort Bragg and loaded up a plane and shipped our bikes over to Haiti and Afghanistan. So that's something also. We are an important part of Cary, as you know, and this check is real money, as Chief said. So this year, we worked 6,265 hours, or actually, 2016, which translates to savings of $164,505.77. So Mayor Weinbreak, would you mind, or Town Manager? I would like to give you the check. And like I said last year, don't spend it all at once, remember?
You want to grab one?
Yeah. It's a big one. I want to mention that there are a few of us here today, and I want them all to stand up and be recognized. Thank you.
Pretty impressive.
Pretty impressive. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Weinbreak. Chief Seeks, we don't get to say it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, Sean, this is her.
Don't spend it all in one place.
Don't spend it all in one place. Cary is so blessed to have so many volunteers that do so much for our community, especially in this day and time when people are having conflicts with their police department. We have people partnering with our police department, and that's such a gratifying feeling. Thank you all so much, and Chief, thank you for keeping this going and keeping it going very well. Thank you all so much, and for all you do. We now move to our second item under recognitions, reports, and presentations, and I'll recognize our Town Manager for this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of Council, guests. I'd like to share some good news today, rather really some great news. Today, the North Carolina Environmental Management Commission unanimously approved the Round Four Jordan Lake Water Supply Allocation. This was a coordinated effort led by the Jordan Lake Partners, made up of utilities surrounding the lake, including Cary Apex, Durham, Orange Water and Sewer Authority, and Pittsburgh. This group has been working since 2009 to plan for our water supply to meet the needs of a growing population for at least the next 50 years. This new allocation secures sufficient Jordan Lake water supply for all of us to meet our anticipated needs until at least 2045. Think about that, Council. This allocation secures sufficient Jordan Lake water supply for all of us to meet our anticipated needs until at least 2045. Future allocations of water supply from the lake will occur as needed. I'd also like to thank our regional partners mentioned earlier, as well as Raleigh, who participated in a coordinated and peer-reviewed work. This effort helps ensure the reliability of Triangle Regional Water Supplies until at least 2060. The Jordan Lake Partnership with Triangle J, Council of Governments, were recognized by the North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association for our work on this outstanding regional plan. I would just like to pass along my sincere appreciation to the staff for this amazing accomplishment. I know in particular, Steve would love to talk at great length about this with any of us, because it really is an amazing accomplishment, and we can never take water and sewer and our utilities for granted, even though every time you turn that faucet, water comes out. And so this is a real amazing accomplishment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steegel, and it is. I mean, knowing that we've secured enough water to last our citizens for the next couple of decades, two to three decades, is pretty amazing. And that's one of our core services. When I go to speak, especially to children, they go, "Well, what does a mayor do? What does the council do? Water, sewer, fire, police, parks?" It's one of our core services, so job well done. Thank you, Mr. Steegel.
We now move to our third item on the agenda, Public Speaks Out. We've included instructions for speaking at Public Speaks Out on the printed agenda, and if you'd like to speak at Public Speaks Out, I'd ask that you take a seat in the rows to my right that are shown as reserved, and follow the instructions on the agenda. Public Speaks Out, speakers have three minutes for their comments, and they may speak on any topic, as long as it's not a public hearing. There's a three-minute time limit at which I will enforce to be fair to all of our speakers. There's a timer located on the speaker's podium. When that green light turns into a yellow light, that means you have 30 seconds remaining, and then when the yellow light turns into a flashing red light, that means your time has expired, and I will immediately interrupt you, not trying to be rude, but trying to be fair to all of the speakers. And I thank our speakers in advance for adhering to the three-minute time limit. We also ask that if you're here with a group, please have a spokesperson with the group, and try not to repeat any comments. I thank everyone in the audience for understanding that we are at a business meeting. Please do not applaud, make remarks from your seats, or anything else that may distract from this meeting. So now is the time for Public Speaks Out, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Wanda K. Watts. I'm a family physician. I worked for 12 years and then retired in 2001 because of poor health. You have a matter before you later this evening, and I wanted to present a personal side to that that will not be in your engineering report. Mr. Smith talked about the town of Cary becoming a hotspot, and my husband and I have a body of water that could put that out should the town become ablaze. We have a problem with our creek flooding. 10 years ago, I contacted the town of Cary and was told they could not do anything about it. I contacted them again, was told the same thing. In 2014, I contacted the town and was told that something probably should have been done the first time I contacted the town when the water entered our crawl space. I was told that they would prepare a report. Two years later, when I called again when there was another major flooding event, five feet of water, I was told that they were just finishing the 2014 report. In all of this, I've been very pleased with Mr. France's help. We came to him recently because we were concerned. We learned that the town has the option to purchase properties if it's financially a good idea for the town, rather than trying to repair the issue. The town has been very diligent. This was supposed to be before you at another time, and when we presented our personal issues, the town was so kind in that they took it back and relooked at the matter. And again, it turned out that it's more feasible to try and put in a drain, that that will be cheaper than purchasing the house and raising it. I understand money. Despite having good health insurance for the past two years, we have spent over $20,000 a year, or three years, for my health care. We've spent over $25,000 for home repairs in the last two years. I need to finish up, but I just wanted you to... I have more to say, but I just wanted to put a face with the report.
Thank you, Dr. Watts. Next speaker, please.
Hi there, I'm Andrea Hill, and I just wanted to put in a request for possible crosswalks on Walker Street and Harrison at Park, in particular, those two locations. It's getting kind of difficult. Both Walker and Harrison are obviously busy streets, and it's getting tough to cross. And I see kids on their way to school in the mornings and afternoons having a tough time as well. It would just be nice to have a couple more crosswalks downtown. And then also, I noticed on the new, I don't know if it's new, but the plan for the park, there was a new-to-me site for further development at the corner of Walker and Park, so the catty corner to where, well, the opposite end where the maintenance inn is. And so I imagine that is going to get developed, but I just want to put in a plea to keep as much parkland as you can, because we got the library going into, so the green space is shrinking, and then whatever does go in. I love the way the lighting at the maintenance inn is softer, and I think if there is development on that corner, it would be nice to have the lighting softer as well and make the park look even prettier. And you're doing a great job downtown. I love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. We'll, I'll ask the Town Manager, have somebody take your contact information and get in touch with you about what can be done with crosswalks, and also point you to the plan for our downtown area, that 13-acre site, seven acres of it's going to be a park, and the rest of it will be developed. So, and their plans for that, and I want to make sure you could get them and have a look at them. Sure. Next speaker for Public Speaks Out. Anyone else for Public Speaks Out? I see no one will close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move to the consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one motion approves all consent agenda items. On the consent agenda, we have Minutes, we have Old Holly Springs Road renaming, and we have necessary easements for the WT116 Holt Road to Davis Tribe Water Line Connection project. Would Councilmembers like any of these pulled for a discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion. Second. And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now move to public hearings. Same rules apply for public hearings that apply for Public Speaks Out with one exception. You now have five minutes for your comments. Our first public hearing is the abandonment of portions of right-of-way on Keener Street and Fairview Drive. James Mitchell will present this item, and Council may take action.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we are here to hold a public hearing for the consideration of abandoning right-of-way along Keener Street and Fairview Drive. On January 27th, 2017, Council adopted a resolution of intent to close a portion of dedicated public right-of-way at the intersection of Keener Street and Fairview Drive. Tonight's hearing allows the public to provide comments as to whether the closing of this will be detrimental to their access or infringe upon their property rights. Here, we see an aerial view depicting the intersection of Keener Street and Fairview. The intersection is located one block east of the downtown park and Walker Street. This original plat of the neighborhood dates from 1946 and shows Mr. Jordan's property along with the excess right-of-way in the intersection. It could not be determined as to why the excess right-of-way was originally dedicated. The yellow section in this slide is proposed abandonment. The proposed abandonment of 2,100 square feet is behind the curb and is not currently part of the existing street. There are no utilities located in the proposed abandonment. Three homes have been approved for development on this site. The town has no future plans to widen Keener Street nor Fairview. The abandonment will allow for better streetscape plan while increasing the tax base for the In accordance with North Carolina General Statute 160A-299 and the Town Cary's Policy 44, Stash published public hearing notification for consecutive leaks and placed signs on Keener Street and Fairview Lane. Certified letters were sent to nearby property owners notifying them of tonight's public hearing. Calls were received from citizens that related to the development of the site, but not to the abandonment of the right-of-way. Approval of the NCDOT is not required because both Keener and Fairview are owned and maintained by the town. If Council has no questions for me, I'll turn the public hearing over to the Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mitchell. And now is the time for the public hearing for the abandonment of portions of right-of-way on Keener Street and Fairview Drive, and I would invite our first speaker forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Julia Lee. My family's been a resident, lived in Wake County for 32 years, 21 of them in Cary. This is where we raised our children. Obviously, we've seen tremendous change, huge population growth, incredible development and building, but I think we've been able to maintain or improve our communities and our residents' quality of life over that time. I'm here in support of the issue before you, and I'm here for entirely selfish reasons. We, my husband and I have a reservation on the lot pending your approval of the abandonment request. The current lot with that huge part of the corner cut off makes for, if not impossible, incredibly awkward placement of a home on that site. A couple of years ago, when we started thinking about abandoning our quiet little suburban cul-de-sac and trying to find a more vibrant area to live in, downtown Cary didn't even hit the radar. But thanks to your leadership and the town's investment in the revitalization of downtown, we now believe that this is the perfect place to build a home and enjoy a walkable, transit-friendly, diverse neighborhood. We'd like to move closer to Town Hall, and we'd like to contribute more to the downtown revitalization than just our tax dollars. So I strongly encourage you to approve the resolution before you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next speaker for this public hearing. Anyone else?
Mayor, members of the Council, I'm George Jordan. I own the property in question here, and I didn't know Julie was going to be here. I just met her tonight, so this, but I wanted to say how this started. I approached, bought, I was approached by a property owner several years ago about selling his house and subdividing it and redeveloping it, and I knew there was an excessive right-of-way there. We were planning on putting the house on the buildable envelope. We wanted to get the house a little closer. We had some front porches, and so I approached James and Donna about can we, are you allowed to put the porch in the right-of-way? And then through that, the discussion came, how did this right-of-way get here? So the whole purpose of the abandonment of the right-of-way is to have the houses up in line with one another to kind of create an urban cottage feel there. So after discussions, we realized there was, as you know, there was not any really reason to have the right-of-way. So that's the purpose of the request. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anyone else to speak at this public hearing?
So I'm Andrea Hill, and I live on Keener Street, and I love the street, and I don't really have any objection to this. The one thing I would like to see, it would be nice if they, all the houses are, you know, kind of the same distance, but one of the things about the street is most of the houses are further back. And that particular spot where the right-of-way is, there's some gorgeous big old trees. If there's any way to save, like the big oak tree and the big maple tree, it would be awesome, because it would make the houses look, I think they might look less harsh. I hate to use that word, but it seems like they might be kind of harsh compared to the rest of the street. Landscaping means a lot, so I hope you all consider that, and thanks so much.
And Ms. Hill, we'll get that information about champion tree ordinance to you as well. We save trees.
Yeah, because we're, there's a lot of them. They're old in downtown.
We're all about saving trees if we can. Anyone else for this public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, open it up to Councilmembers for questions or comments to Mr. Mitchell. If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the right-of-way abandonment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion.
I just wanted to comment, I think, how cool it is that we had some people show up tonight and talk about some of the things that we've been doing downtown and the success that we've had, and how it's revitalizing and becoming a place that people are now wanting to move to. And I think the one speaker's comments, you know, a few years ago, she didn't even consider downtown as one of the options, and now they're looking forward to come into downtown. I just think that speaks so well of what we, as a council, have tried to accomplish with our staff and our citizens and everybody working together, and it just feels so good to be a part of it. It's just, it's amazing.
Anything else? Okay, we have a motion on the table. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Mayor.
We now move to discussion items. Our first discussion item is MetLife Economic Development Incentive Grant. Lana Hei will present this item, and Council may take action. Ms. Hei.
Good evening, Council. In March 2013, Governor Pat McCrory announced that MetLife intended to invest $125 million in facilities in Charlotte and in Cary and create 2,600 jobs by the end of 2015. of 2015. This project was made possible because of a Job Development Investment Grant and a One North Carolina Fund Award, which is made in conjunction with incentive grants from local governments, in this case, including Cary and Wake County. For the portion of the project in Cary, MetLife agreed to meet certain requirements related to jobs, average salaries for those jobs, and investment. So first, let's look at the jobs. As part of the incentive agreement, MetLife was required to create 250 jobs. As of January 1st of 2016, they have created 1,474 jobs. At nearly 1,500 employees, MetLife has become one of Cary's largest employers. Now, let's look at average salaries. They were required to have an average salary of $90,792. At the time, the contract was signed, this was two times the average salary in Wake County. The actual salary average is over $100,000, nearly $105,000. Now, as far as the value of improvements, they agreed to, to build improvements that would equal at least $50 million. The actual value of the improvements, $111 million, includes two office buildings, two parking decks, as well as business property. Now, what is the town's investment in all of this? As an incentive for locating here, Cary agreed to pay an economic development grant of 2.25% of the value of the improvements. The improvements are defined as the assessed value of the real property minus the land plus business property. This incentive would be paid over a period of eight years. For seven of those years, each payment would be 0.25% of the assessed value as of January 1st of the preceding year. For one of the eight years, in the year to be at MetLife's discretion, the payment would be 0.5% of the assessed value, equalling the 2.25%. And MetLife has requested that 0.5% this year. There is also an annual payment cap. The annual payment may not exceed the amount paid in taxes on the improvements that year. As detailed in the staff report, the 2017 incentive payment comes to $472,696, which exceeds the amount available in the project account. Therefore, staff recommends an appropriation from the general fund fund balance to the Economic Development Strategic Fund for the MetLife project.
Thank you, Ms. Hi. Council members have any questions or comments? I think a major point for me was the cap. We're not giving back more than we're taking in. So that's very important for me.
And this is the one year that it'll be at 0.5%?
Yes.
So all the rest of the years will be at 0.25?
Yes.
Other questions, comments? I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion.
A second.
And a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Oh, one more?
Oh.
No, sorry.
Sorry.
That's part of the discussion. There, there was a discrepancy between what's on the agenda. It said the council appropriate $101,522, and your slide says 111. So I just want to make sure which one's right.
That's my fault. It's 101.
It's a...
It was it.
Uh... Yes, the staff report says 101, 522. So the staff report is right. Correct?
You want to change your motion and do in the amount of?
The staff report is correct.
I'm the one that made the error on the slide.
Okay, just wanted to...
I think it's, I think it's been clarified.
Okay.
I think, I think it's good as is.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion and a clarification. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Hi.
Thank you.
We now move to our next discussion item, Northwest Cary Resurfacing. Mr. Wood will present the item and council may take action. Mr. Wood.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I will be presenting the construction bid award for the Northwest Cary Parkway Resurfacing and Rehabilitation Project from Evans Road to North Harrison Avenue. Cary Parkway is one of our signature thoroughfare streets that balance mobility with aesthetics. Cary Parkway interconnects citizens to where they live, work, and just simply enjoy life. This is the last section of Cary Parkway that is currently not on NC DOT's maintenance system. In the continuous effort of keeping Cary's streets, streets great, Cary received bids on February 1st for the construction of the Northwest Cary Resurfacing and Rehabilitation Project. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract to the lowest responsible bidder, Lane Construction Corporation. The contractor will be addressing existing maintenance needs along Northwest Cary Parkway, thus improving the ride quality along this corridor. Once complete, town staff will petition NC DOT to accept this section of Northwest Cary Parkway onto the state maintenance system. This will effectively reduce long-term maintenance cost for Cary. Other streets within the vicinity of Northwest Cary Parkway that are currently in poor condition will also be resurfaced. This allows a single contractor to perform the work within the vicinity of the Northwest Cary Parkway to reduce costs and prevent scheduling conflicts. The bid alternate provides for removing all concrete sections and rebuilding the street with an entirely new asphalt pavement structure, eliminating the uneven concrete joints that contributes to the bumpy ride throughout this portion of Northwest Cary Parkway. Furthermore, the newly surfaced street will include a two-foot paved shoulder along the existing grass shoulder section to increase safety and reduce maintenance. The second part of this project is to make minor repairs to the bridge over Black Creek in accordance with NC DOT requirements. Cary has employed a design consultant to prepare plans and assist in getting the bridge to be accepted by NC DOT in the future. The complexity of the construction will require detours and lane closures. Work will not be performed at night. Traffic alerts and citizen notifications will be provided, and construction is scheduled to start this spring and be completed by this fall. In summary, staff recommends award of the base bid and bid alternate for construction of the Northwest Cary Parkway Resurfacing and Rehabilitation Project, ST 1230, to Lane Construction Corporation. With that, I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Questions for Mr. Wood?
Just one question. Why no construction at night? Is that the contractor thing? Is that not wanting to disrupt the neighborhood thing?
It's to not disrupt the neighborhood because of the vicinity of the homes toward, to Cary Parkway.
Okay.
A lot of homes back up to Northwest.
Okay. Still, it seems like the construction schedule is pretty, pretty quick, all, all things considered. I mean, I can't tell you how long overdue this is.
Oh, yeah.
Especially the concrete section. That is one of the worst sections to drive over of road in Cary. It's terrible. This has been a long time coming, and I'm very excited about it. And I'd like to thank you and staff and everybody for their work. Thank you.
It's interesting to follow up on that. I actually had somebody come in my office this week and say, I know this is going to sound random. They haven't seen the agenda. But Cary Parkway between Evans and Harrison is terrible. Can you do something about it? I'm like, well, actually, we...
You should just say, yeah, we're going to, we're going to handle it next week.
I already fixed that.
Right now. I'll get to it. All right. That's great.
Can you talk a little bit about the Black Creek Bridge? I, I don't think there's a bike lane on that. It's not wide enough, is it? Is it, or I can't remember.
There is no bike lane or any...
Extra wide, or a sidewalk, correct?
Or sidewalk on that bridge at this time. But right now, the only thing that we're going to try to do is, again, we're just doing some minor repairs to allow NC DOT to take over maintenance for that bridge.
Oh.
You know, if there was a, it would take a, another project and some more funding to actually do it.
I think the town actually looked at the bridge years ago, given sidewalk requests and for bike lanes and such, and it would be an incredibly expensive project. I mean, you're basically rebuilding the bridge to make it wider.
Now, I was just curious if now was an opportunity, right? You're doing something to it. Maybe now's the time you could just add to it, but guess not.
The areas we're doing are very minor.
Okay.
So, just curious, does this, turning over to DOT, will that help trigger future development of the second half of the other two lanes of Cary Parkway in the future? Or, I mean, before it was turned over, I assumed it was our responsibility. I don't know.
Yeah. The only thing that I'm, turning over the NC DOT does is basically turn the responsibility of maintaining the street over to the NC DOT. Developers will still have to go through the same processes as far as trying to develop the property. So...
And just for those people watching, the town will still be taking care of the medians and such. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments, motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
A second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now move to our last discussion item, Request for Drainage Assistance Policy Statement 146. Before council can consider this item, we need to remove it from the table. So I'd entertain a motion to do so. So moved. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Steigl will introduce this item and we'll hear a presentation from staff and council may take action this evening. Mr. Steigl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the staff provides this presentation tonight, since stormwater is such an important and delicate topic, I thought it would be helpful to have Steve provide an overview, kind of a big picture view of how we approach stormwater, how we have been through the years, and, and how intricately it is studied. And then also through Billy's presentation, get a sense of just how important it is for the staff to model, excuse me, the council's expectations in, in treating this issue with the humanity and the, and the empathy that is required in dealing with such an important matter. So we wanted to kind of make sure we touched on all those points. And so if you would bear with us as we kind of take a step back or up, if you will, into kind of the bigger picture first, and then we'll get to the item in front of us to, to put it in context.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This staff report before us tonight is a recommendation for stormwater infrastructure improvements to correct the flooding of Dr. Watts's home in Cary, as we heard earlier this evening. But as Sean said, since we've had a number of discussions recently regarding stormwater, including in our recent retreat, we wanted to bring you this stormwater management primer and to give you an overview of some of the resources that we use to help evaluate everything from investigating complaints of home flooding, review of new development, and selecting new capital infrastructure projects. So in 2006, the town completed a study of flood plan and stormwater management in the central areas of Cary. This study identified flood risks and lets us help our citizens by giving them the best information possible so that they can obtain flood insurance to protect their property. It also helps us prioritize to make needed stormwater infrastructure improvements. This study supplements federal flood plan mapping to help us identify gaps in our knowledge, especially with regard to flooding risks, and to prepare for increasing downtown development activity. But first, let me give you an overview of some of the methodology and other resources that we use to try to find harmony between the nature and the built environment so that people can make the best use of their property. So there's few things more natural than rainfall. We need it, but sometimes we get so much of it that it can create challenges. We can't control it, but we can try to predict it and understand its impacts on our community. But it can be very variable. Looking at this slide, we see the annual rainfall totals since 2000. And see how much more rainfall we've had in recent years. Average is, over this period, is about 43 inches per year. And we've had anywhere from seven to 14 more inches of rain in each of the last four years. So it can be very variable. When we hear reports that there has been more stormwater and flooding in recent years, people are right, and it's not because of development or anything else. It's, we really have had a lot more rain in recent years. It was said in a recent public hearing that we've, that we have frequent 100-year floods. And this is at the same time, it's, it's a very seemingly simple metric, but it's also very complex and difficult to get your head around sometimes. Based on all of our records, and we have probably about at least 80 to 100 years' worth of rainfall data, we've only had one storm in Cary in the working memory of everybody who works for the town staff. And that's about 30 years collective, or time interval. Only one storm that exceeded the 100-year storm. And that was the extremely heavy thunderstorm we had last July, July 2016. And that was determined to be about a thousand-year event. So even Hurricanes Matthew and Fran did not reach the 100-year threshold in Cary. Stormwater is a very local thing as well. Rainfall can vary very widely across the town just in the same storm event. And analysis of drainage and flooding is very site-specific. Stormwater management is very technical, and it's highly dependent upon the rainfall patterns, the local topography, type of ground cover, land use, and many other variables. We use sophisticated computer modeling in many of our analyses to simulate the effects of different rainfall patterns so that we can develop solutions that will work under a wide variety of storm events. Stormwater management is also, as we've heard of, it's a very personal and adaptive issue. And since it almost always affects people where they live, sometimes right up to the peaceful enjoyment of their homes. So in a few minutes, Mr. Lee will tell you more about, it's a case that, where they've been affected by this flooding in their home. I want to show you some of the resources we use to manage stormwater in Cary. So here's a map of Cary. And here is a GIS overlay of all the creeks and streams within Cary. Here is the watershed dividing line between the Jordan Lake watershed and the Neuse River watershed, with Jordan Lake being to the left, to the west, and Neuse River tributaries flowing to the right, to the east. There's three major tributaries in the Neuse River Basin. This is the older parts of town, and there are Crabtree Creek, Walnut Creek, and Swift Creek. And this also shows some of the other major tributaries. The Federal Emergency Management Administration, FEMA, produces maps of flood plains all across the country. This came out of the Clean Water Act and other federal legislation regarding water back in the 1970s. Our first FEMA flood maps were introduced in 1974, and this shows our current maps. These maps were also updated in the 80s, 90s, and 2006. The next version, revision of these maps will be up for adoption in 2018. They're in development now. The FEMA mapping program stops when the watershed gets smaller than one square mile. Note that these, the red areas that are shown as FEMA flood plains generally stop at the Maynard Road Loop. That's because the watersheds within the Maynard Road Loop are fairly small. The oldest parts of Cary are at the very tops of these watersheds, and not any really large streams or creeks in that area because they all originate there and spread out from there. So the Tuscarora Indians who lived in this area before were settled by European immigrants, had a name that translates roughly, "The water flows in all directions." I'm not going to try to pronounce it. But anyway, it's at the top of a watershed, and so all the water flows out and generally radiates out from the center of Cary. It's on a natural hilltop and in some of the highest ground in Wake County. And yes, it is higher than downtown Apex.
So we're really the peak of good living.
Well...
Just saying.
I think so. So, so since there are no watersheds within the Maynard Road Loop that are over one square mile, there was no FEMA mapping and no FEMA modeling of any of these flood plains. So in 2006, the town completed a TCAP flood study, largely to supplement the FEMA maps and to identify flood plains in the center of town. The red on the map here is the FEMA flood limits from the 2006, from the 2006 FEMA maps. That's coincidental. And then this study that we've heard about was prepared by the engineering firm of Duberian-Davis, and it identified three additional 100-year floodplain areas in the central part of Cary, and they're shown in green. So just for reference, the gold star shows the location of the Trimble Avenue site that we talked about, the February 23 public hearing. And the gold line is generally the watershed that that site is included in. It is outside of the 2006 study area, and it is included in the FEMA study area. So if there was a floodplain in that area, it would be mapped and shown in red there. We're going to have a lot more presentation materials on this site and this whole watershed, stormwater study, as that resoning case proceeds through the process. But the 2006 study looked, also looked deeper into areas that had a history of drainage challenges and recommended stormwater infrastructure improvements in the central parts of Cary. These recommendations totaled about $8 million in 2006. So it was recently said that the town had not addressed any of the recommendations of this study. But in fact, we have completed many projects, about 20 projects that are included in these areas indicated on the map, several of them very significant. And I'll say the TCAP-ish area to improve the situation for people who live and work there. And since 2006, the town has spent about $4.15 million on this work. And since 2006, the town has spent about $4.15 million on this work, and like I said, about 20 separate projects, and all the other projects that were recommended that have not been addressed yet are programmed into our CIP. So let's get back to our local focus, because all of this, everything I'm talking about still affects people where they live and work. The 2006 study also identified about 180 primary structures and about 60 accessory structures that are located within these floodplanes, in areas that were previously on map. So remember that prior to 2001, lots could be built, homes could be built in the floodplanes, before the town adopted its floodplain ordinance. So many of the structures that we found that were in these newly identified floodplanes were built in the 50s till the 70s, roughly. And remember, we didn't create these floodplanes. They were already there, we just identified them. And this is a very important first step to making the improvements in stormwater management to protect these properties. This map here is the part of the Swift Creek watershed, and you can see Maynard Road to the lower left, Pamlico Drive, Cornwall Street, and we're currently working with some of these property owners to help them find solutions to their flooding. It was also said that there is a culvert in the, that was identified in the 2006 study that was three to five times smaller than it should be, and that it had not been addressed. We in fact did enlarge this culvert as part of the Maynard Road widening project, which was completed around 2006. So the takeaway here is that we have done a lot to address issues in the older parts of Cary. Here's a more sophisticated 3D LiDAR image. This just kind of brings it a little bit more to life when you see the 3D and the trees, and just kind of really get more of a sense of the lay of the land, and you can visualize things a little bit better. This radar, ground-based radar system picked up the finished floor elevations of all of these homes, and then was able to identify them all with their relative level of risk, with, you can see the graph on there, the red being the highest-risk structure, is green having some risk, and the light blue and the yellow increasing from there. Very often, homeowners may not have flood insurance because they don't know they're in a floodplain. So all of this study, this 2006 study and its results, has helped us, help our citizens by letting them, by educating them and giving them the information so that they can make decisions to provide the coverage that they need to protect themselves from unknown hazards that were previously unknown. We spent, we were very heavily engaged with our citizens with stormwater, and just real quickly show you, this is a map of all the calls we've received in the last three years. Many different reasons why people call us about stormwater, but just to give you a sense that some of these are easy, some of these are very difficult, but this is the calls we get, and they're pretty well distributed across town. But we want to focus on homes that flood, and we call it structural flooding, and as a proportion of our overall call volume, structural flooding calls are relatively few. However, these are probably the most important, so we, they're a very high priority for us. From this map, we can see that most of the cases are in the oldest parts of town, and almost always all involve homes that were built before the floodplain ordinance went into effect. So many of these cases have already been addressed. We've made improvements in public infrastructure, we've referred people to FEMA for some satisfactory outcomes, and we've also purchased a number of homes when that was the best option to do. So most of these cases have been addressed, however, there are still quite a few that we're still actively working with. And this brings us back to the staff report that's before us this evening, which is the home, Dr. Watts and Mr. Lopez's home at 100 Joel Court. So as I get ready to hand it over to Mr. Lee, let me just close by saying that we clearly understand that you expect us to work with our citizens, and we do that. And just say that we have the expertise to do it. We, your professional staff cares very much about doing the best we can to serve our citizens, and we know that there will be other cases that we're working on now that we will be bringing back to you in the near future for recommendations for action. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration tonight is the proposed storm drainage improvements based on a request from Cary property owners, Mr. Daniel Lopez and Dr. Wanda K. Watts. Their property is located at 100 Joel Court, and has been impacted by crawl space flooding on at least three occasions in the past 10 years. This home was built in 1985, and is approximately 2,000 square feet. The property is inside the Maynard Loop, north of High House Road, and west of Old Apex. It's at the corner of Bay Oak and Joel Court. The yellow highlights the property location. There's a buffered stream behind the property that originates roughly 1,000 feet upstream. This stream flows west and encounters a 30-inch culvert that crosses under Bay Oak, and then through various HOA open space to the confluence of Cole's Branch. You see the star there. Here's a look at buffered streams in the vicinity. Cole's Branch is one of the 2006 TCAP flood study streams. It's highlighted in the light blue. It's interesting to note that this confluence is where the TCAP flood study ends, and the FEMA map stream begins, highlighted in green. So the 100 Joel Court is outside the TCAP and FEMA floodplain, but it's in, within the riparian buffer, with the house being roughly 30 feet from the stream bank. The drainage area upstream of Bay Oak is approximately 27 acres. Most of the area was developed from the mid-'70s to the mid-'80s, and there's no been, been any development there since about 1987. Here's a more localized view of the property. The red outline depicts the approximate footprint of the house, foundation, and the yellow line shows the elevated deck and stairs to the yard. We evaluated the performance of the existing storm system. How effective is the culvert in conveying stormwater? Typically, culverts crossing a new sub, in a new subdivision are designed for the 25-year storm event. Policy statement, cases like this raise the design standard to the 100-year storm. Here's a simulation of the existing culvert during the design rainfall event. As rain continues to fall, water backs up behind the culvert. As you can see, the existing culvert crossing doesn't pass the design storm used in our evaluation quick enough in the crawl space floods. It should be noted that this also shows impacts to the adjacent property, 102 Joel Court. I'd also like to point out that we simulated that July 2016 event as well that Steve, or Mr. Brown mentioned earlier. We looked at several options for mitigating this unfortunate situation, including replacing the pipe with a larger one, and adding a second pipe to the existing system. Adding a pipe was considered a better alternative, so we simulated adding a 42-inch pipe, 48-inch pipe, and a 60-inch pipe. Adding the 42-inch pipe to the system reduces flood elevations by more than five feet and alleviates crawl space flooding. The blue shaded area shows the yard flooding. Simulating the 48-inch further reduces the flood elevation by another foot and a half, and reduces the flood footprint significantly, as shown in the purple shaded area. Adding a 60-inch pipe even mitigates the flood more, and it can be seen by the red shaded area, but not as significantly as the 48-inch alternative. We evaluated downstream of the discharge based on adding a 48-inch culvert, and found no structural impacts to properties, making this a viable alternative. Here are the costs associated with each option discussed. We recommend the 48-inch parallel pipe. It should be noted that we looked long and hard at purchasing the property because of this unfortunate situation. We choose the tax value of the house at $230,000. Closing site prep and demolition at about $30,000. To purchase the house would have been approximately $90,000 more than the recommended option. To further complicate the matters, the most prominent consideration is the adjacent property. It's impacted by flooding, which dictates culvert improvements cannot be ignored. So purchasing the house and making necessary culvert improvements significantly increase cost of the project. Therefore, we recommend construction of the 48-inch parallel culvert.
And just to conclude, we know that we'll be facing more of these type situations as we work through cases that we're developing now, and working with homeowners. We'll see more things too, as infrastructure ages, and possibly even as watersheds change with more infill and redevelopment in the future. But we hope that with this presentation, that you can see that we are in a good position to help keep Cary great, and work with, work with our citizens in the future. And with that, our presentation's concluded, and we'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions?
Can you talk about the recommended size of the pipe in the first recommendation versus the changes that were made when you went back and, you know, looked at it a second time and did some more modeling, especially with the storm we had in July? Can you just talk about the difference?
Sure. Our past approach has been to do the least amount to achieve no structural flooding. And so the 48, 42-inch option achieved no structural flooding. So that's why we presented that the first time around. But, you know, being more adaptive, looking at, to help, you know, the 48-inch pipe is not that much more expensive, and it will significantly move the flooding away from the house.
Okay. Just comments. First, Mr. Brown, Mr. Lee, I want to thank you both and your staff for everything that you did to look into Ms. Watts and Mr. Lopez's concerns. I think it, we ended up with a much better project because of that. I know it wasn't easy, I know it was very time-consuming, but it truly, the report and the work that we have before us, I believe, truly demonstrates that you all do care, and you want to make the best improvements and solve as many problems as you can. There is, it's not just 100 Joel Court, there is a concern with the adjoining home, and I'm pretty sure as time goes on, that might, the impact to 102 might become greater, and then 104 might start experiencing some problems depending on changing in floodplanes and such. So I think this option not only helps address the problems at 100 Joel Court, but also at 102. I want to thank Mr. Lopez and Ms. Watts for your patience. I know this has been a very trying time for you, a very emotional time for you, a very expensive time for you. It's not, it wasn't easy for me looking at these slides and seeing the name Cornwall pop up twice. That's the street I live on, and I can tell you, me and my home, my neighborhood, my neighbors, especially those on the lower end of Ralph Drive and such, experienced very similar problems to that which you all have. I apologize for it, but again, I thank you both very much for your patience. I really appreciate the effort that you guys have put into this, and I'm very pleased that a second look resulted in a larger pipe and hopefully a better solution, and I appreciate your willingness to do so. I'm optimistic about this, and hopeful that it does address all the crawl space flooding. If it doesn't, please let us know. Unfortunately, I'm assuming this is going to take a couple of years to construct, is that correct?
We're going to put it on the fast track and do it as fast as we can, but there are easements, so that works.
Complicates things, yes. Okay. I appreciate putting it on the fast track, because I know these folks have suffered a lot over the years. Hopefully, we don't get another one of those storms like we had last year, but you never know. I mean, who thought it would be 70 degrees for the month of February, and it's going to snow this weekend, so weather's weird. It was interesting also to see some of the rainfall data, that, you know, clearly we have gotten a lot more rain over the last, you know, four, five, six years, and so the ground obviously stays wet, is saturated, it can't absorb the water, and you get a storm, it's not a 100-year storm, not a 50-year storm, maybe not even a 25-year storm, but it creates a heck of a lot of flooding because the ground has already absorbed what it can. So that was good to know. I really appreciated the presentation, I really appreciated the graphics, the simulations and such, and I will actually say, all around, the presentations for everything have really improved with the imagery and things that, you know, none of us up here are stormwater engineers, or traffic engineers, or things like of that nature, so it helps us, and I think our citizens better understand. So, thank you. I look forward to this getting started as soon as possible, and hopefully it does what we expected to do.
Other comments?
I just have a question, I just, going back to the simulation that you were showing, was that the 100-year flood simulation?
Yes.
So what we had two years ago, you said you also modeled that as well?
I did, and it was a smaller volume of rain, so actually, the 100-year 24-hour is, it was worse than the storm we had in July.
Oh, it was? Okay. That's what I wanted to know. You said, I was looking for the results of that, so, all right, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I also appreciate the update, Mr. Brown, the, from the 2006 TCAP report, because it does help for us to know, as we talk with residents, to know that there've been 4.15 million dollars of work on toward that suggested aid or whatever, that we're still working on it. So that's really helpful to see that. I think we want to share that with our citizens and make that, make them aware. Appreciate your work on that.
And will we have this in a, this presentation in a place on our website where people can look at it? It'd be great to point people to if they want to know more about what's going on, what we're doing.
Surely.
Because it was an excellent presentation, it really said a lot, and helped me understand more than I thought I did.
Yeah, and I like that it also identifies still current issues that we have a lot of work to do on, and acknowledging, I think, you know, being honest about it, I think hope earns the trust of our citizens that we recognize it, and we intend to work on that.
In fact, if, I might go so far as to say, if you were to do this again in some sort of webinar of the primer, I think it might alleviate a lot of people who come to us and ask us, you know, how are stormwater issues relegated? Who do I go to? If you could make that, you know, the first part of this presentation that you showed, also alleviating some of the misconceptions that were out there, that people thought we hadn't done anything since 2006, I think that would really help and make it very quick and easy for someone to get the information they need, easy.
That's an excellent idea.
We'll look into how best to do that.
And you're video-ready, Steve. You're just, you're ready.
Other questions or comments? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lee, thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
It's time to go into closed session. Ms. Bush?
Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11, and 3, I'm sure that we hold a closed session to discuss matters retaining, relating to the location and expansion of industries or other businesses in the town, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the town in negotiations, and to consult with attorneys employed by, and/or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is made privileged or confidential by GS 143, 318, 10E.
Second. There's a motion and a second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and we'll move into closed session.
I did memorize it, but I didn't.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move. Second. Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
We'll reconvene our council meeting. That's the end of our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So they move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Question? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And you oppose? Motion's unanimous, and we are adjourned. Thank you.
Take away, Mike.
This has been a production of Keri TV. Visit the Town of Keri's website at townkerry.org.